Good afternoon. I'm going to call us back to, back into session for finance and facilities. Our next item on, on the agenda is a review of the Guaranteed Energy Savings Program. And with that, Vice Chancellor Mackey.
Thank you, Chair Hipps. I'm going to turn it right over to Associate Vice Chancellor Swanson.
Thank you. At the March 2024 Board Meeting, the System Office provided a facilities planning update and recommended the exploration of some alternative financing streams to support asset preservation needs across the system that don't rely on traditional legislative funding. Since that time, we've been working on a program to utilize energy savings performance contracting to deliver energy projects without requiring upfront capital from the system. Joining me at the table today is System Director Ryan Reese with Design and Construction, and Ryan will provide an overview of our energy contracting programs.
Good afternoon, Chair Hipps and trustees. As Brian mentioned, my name is Ryan Reese and I serve as our System Director for Design and Construction within the Facilities Unit. And I'm here to talk to you today about our Energy Savings Performance Contracting Program. As Brian mentioned, this is a follow-up to board meeting about 18 months ago related to facilities planning. And we wanted to provide, provide an update on what we have been doing to answer the question of how campuses can advance necessary maintenance and asset preservation projects without legislative funding. At that same meeting, trustees also encouraged us to be bold in our explorations. And we heard that loud and clear, and I'm excited to provide an update of what we've been up to since then. So Energy Savings Performance Contracting is also known as Guaranteed Energy Savings Program or GUESS. The state, through its Department of Commerce, used to provide technical support for these type of projects, which they call their GUESS program. To differentiate it from that program, we are calling ours the Energy Savings Performance Contracting Program, but the terms are interchangeable. And I will admit that this area is, is rife with acronyms. I'll do my best to spell those out. But if I miss one, just feel free to shout or throw a pencil at me or something. So Energy Savings Performance Contracting is a contract mechanism to leverage future energy savings to complete energy-related projects. In this model, no upfront capital is required to complete a project. Project costs are financed and amortized over a period of up to 20 years, similar to a home loan, with the important distinction that the annual payments are offset by energy and operational savings, and that these savings are guaranteed by the contractor performing the work. In this area, those contractors are called ESCOs, Energy Services Companies. If the actual realized savings are less than the guaranteed savings, the ESCO will cut a check for the difference. So what type of projects are we talking about here? There we go. So this contracting method lends itself well to energy efficiency projects such as LED lighting, HVAC upgrades, building control systems and others, and also renewable energy projects such as solar and geothermal. What conversely does not work as well are projects that are remodels or architecture-driven projects, because again, these projects need significant savings to offset the, the cost. So anything that is approached under this model typically has some substantial savings associated with it.
Ryan, may I interrupt you, please, and Hip? I think I at least need a little remedial education about this concept. So if I wanted to replace all the lights at DCTC with LED lights, and it would save me $2,000 a year over 20 years. So where would I get the money? How would I pay the money back? How does this financing concept work?
Sure, so let's. Sure, so let's just use your LED lighting example. Let's say that, that, that project costs $10,000 to install those, and you're going to, you're going to save $2,000 a year. So you would finance the $10,000 cost, similar to a loan, and you would pay that back over a period of up to 20 years. Those savings of $2,000 a year, then you can compile over those, over those 20 years. So over the life of that loan, you would actually save $40,000, which, over the term, the repayment term, then you're offsetting the capital cost, and you're actually pocketing an additional, you know, $20,000 in savings if I'm at this correct. So does that, does that make sense?
Funds to fund your project, to build your project. What does the savings have to do with paying back the loan?
Trustee Sewell, the guarantee is, I think, a peace of mind for an institution that those payments are going to be realized and offset by savings. But the payback functions as a loan, right? So however an institution feels they're best able to pay that loan back, it doesn't necessarily have to come from a savings budget if, if, if they don't want it to. But the guarantee, I just think, helps us ensure that the investment that they're making will have, will have returns associated with it if they so choose. Okay, so go back to some of the limitations on, on project type. I mentioned architecture-centered projects. Assets or systems with minimal energy conception such as roofs are not ideal fits either, because the energy savings from a roof replacement might not be sufficient to offset all of the project costs. And also unbundled energy savings measures are also not ideal fits, because the payback needs to cover not only the, the cost of the equipment and the installation, but also the indirect administrative costs associated with any project in terms of project management and permits and fees and all those kind of things. So this model cannot address all of the facilities' needs across the system. This is not a substitute for HEAPER, for example. But for projects that do make sense, the System Office team has been busy building out a program to support institutions that are interested in this work. Some of the things that we've been up to at the System Office is we've been working with procurement and the Office of General Counsel to develop solicitation and contract templates. We've been coordinating with the Tax Services Team to ensure that institutions can leverage federal tax credits or rebates associated with this work to further offset projects' costs. We have established a good working relationship with the Minnesota Climate Innovation Finance Authority, or MNSIFA. This is Minnesota's Green Bank, which was established in 2023 to finance energy and sustainability projects like these in support of the state's aggressive carbon reduction goals. And we are also developing a public financing RFP template to ensure that institutions get market rate for project financing. We've been reaching out to institutions potentially interested in these type of projects. I'm happy to share that three campuses have volunteered to undertake an ESBC public project, and I'll speak more to those in a moment. So what are we trying to achieve via this program? Several things: a reduction in our maintenance backlog, of course. In addition to some of the project examples I mentioned earlier, ESBCs could be partnered with campus R&amp;R funds to stretch those dollars further. We're also seeking to reduce our overall system energy consumption in a way that really moves the needle. ESBCs also provide a buffer against rising electricity rates as avoided future costs. I'm sure many of you have seen the news recently about the impacts of federal legislation and the explosion of data center construction on energy rates. I passed a large data center construction, as most probably did on the way in here as well. I had just seen yesterday in an article that I read that electricity rates have risen nearly 10% since January of this year alone. So additionally to that, we're hoping that the ESBC program facilitates above and beyond equipment replacements. Traditionally, limited legislative funding has led institutions to lowest first cost replacements, like-for-like, the cheapest initial cost, et cetera. ESBCs allow institutions to consider the total cost of ownership, taking into account energy and operational costs over the life of the assets in making project decisions, which facilitate lower long-term energy and operating costs, even if the upfront capital costs might be slightly higher. A good example of this is pursuing geothermal heating and cooling systems versus traditional boiler replacements. And in fact, we have two institutions that received 2025 HEAPER funding for boiler replacements, and that they are currently exploring the feasibility of going to a geothermal system under an ESBC model. And then finally, ESBC projects foster a transparent collaborative team-based project delivery approach, because the contractor, the ESCO team, has the proverbial skin in the game in the form of the savings guarantee. Both the institution and the ESCO are mutually invested in long-term savings and projects, in my experience, where teams are mutually pointed in the same direction, tend to end up pretty successfully. And I'll also add that, since these projects do not rely on legislative funding, projects can be undertaken at any time rather than being tethered to legislative timelines and requirements. ESBCs are not without risks. Our preference remains that we receive adequate legislative funding to address all of our campus needs, but absent that, here we are. This program, as I mentioned before, cannot replace HEAPER, but it can supplement it. From the beginning, we have made a concerted effort to acknowledge the risks, clearly communicate them to institutions exploring these projects, and build out a program that specifically mitigates them. The concept of completing a significant project without upfront capital is attractive on its face, but obviously, it's critical to understand the details that go into these, these projects. Often, ESCOs will attempt to incorporate staff savings into project performance. For example, if you are replacing fluorescent light fixtures with LEDs, an ESCO might say that you'll see operational cost savings, because your general maintenance worker, for example, won't have to spend as much time replacing light bulbs. But as anybody in facilities on, on campuses know, that general maintenance worker isn't going to go away. They're just going to move on to the next 100 priorities on the project list. So there really aren't any actual savings that would be realized in any kind of operating budget there. So to caution against those type of assumptions. Additionally, these projects require a significant long-term commitment to repay the loans, similar to revenue bond, bond or geo-bond projects. Financing terms of up to 20 years may limit future flexibility for that asset or facility should campus needs change. Since some of the savings guarantee comes from future cost avoidance, right? You're avoiding future energy rate hikes. Budgeting is required to actually realize these savings or have them show up in, in a budget. The savings guarantee is also contingent on agreed-upon operating assumptions. So deviating from these assumptions, and for example, operating a facility in more hours, or maybe during the weekend when that wasn't originally planned, is going to impact the energy performance of that building. And that may be outside of the parameters of the guarantee. Additionally, several federal tax credits related to this work that were established in the 2022 Inflation Reduction Act are being phased out or outright eliminated. These credits can help to offset it project administrative costs and help institutions pay back the loans more quickly. And in some circumstances, can even make or break projects with higher equipment or infrastructure costs, such as geothermal systems, which have a lot of piping associated with them that add costs, but do not provide savings as well. The good news for geothermal, I'll add, which currently has up to a 30% tax credit for those systems, which is huge and can make those, those projects feasible. That credit, it appears for the time being at least, is not, is likely to survive and will, and will continue. So that's positive. Less positive nudes for things like solar and, and EV charging. But then finally, I'll just note that these, the contracts under this work are more complex than traditional construction contracts and require additional training and support for institutions to administer them. So let's talk a little bit about the three pilot projects that we have underway that I previously mentioned. Minnesota State College Southeast is looking to package some LED lighting upgrades with building control systems and is also exploring some solar arrays. Winona State University actually completed two projects similar to Southeast's back in 2011 and 2020 under the old state program, and now they are back for a Phase Two. This is fairly common with these type of projects. Potential opportunities may be identified in the first phase of a project as worthy of further investigation, but not implemented. Or a second phase might upgrade or enhance a measure installed in the first phase. And Winona's project includes both of those examples. A replacement of the fume hood valves in their science building, which may sound like a minor thing, but actually it has a potential to be, to save significant energy and costs. And also the implementation of an active energy management system, which will drill, really drill down into the weeds in terms of a facility's operating performance by fine-tuning operating schedules, set points, and using real-time cost data analytics and even AI to identify efficiencies. This is next-level operational sophistication that probably wouldn't happen without this ESBC model. So I'm, we're very excited to see how this one shakes out. President Jan, not to put you totally on the spot, but because Winona State has been sort of pioneers in this area and has done a couple of these projects, want to make sure you had a chance to add anything that you might have based on your experience with these projects.
Well, the first thing I can say is the person that actually started all this was Chancellor Olson. He actually laid the groundwork for much of this in 2020 and been doing some great work. We did the $12 million less project, which we just finally kind of wrapped up. And that built us the largest solar energy system in the Minnesota State system. So we generate almost 20% of our own electricity on campus. And with some other related projects with the way they changed water and stuff, 25% carbon reduction and 9.8 million gallons of water is saved per year. And so Phase One of that project was very successful. And we're, and that's why we're coming back to Phase Two, because it worked out so well and has been truth in showing that sustainability is really, can pay off as a fiscal solution, as well as just being good to the planet.
Thank you. All right. And then the, the third project on here is at MSU Morehead. Their project is just wrapping up the audit and design phase and looking to move forward into implementation. So this project is the further along of the, of the three pilots that I've described. At next month's meeting, we plan to present the Morehead project in detail to go over the full process from start to finish, identify the measures that they're, that they plan on implementing, and share the project costs and anticipated savings associated with them. So again, today, we just wanted to use the time to introduce the concept, understanding that some trustees may be familiar with this work and some, and some may not. And then we want to be able to incorporate any feedback that we hear today in, into the presentation next month, when we really kind of dive into the details on Morehead's project. Before I finish, I do, I do want to acknowledge some System Office colleagues who have been instrumental as we have built out this program. Chrissy Heinz, our Sustainability Manager, has been vital to building up this program from, from, from day one. Steve Gednalsky with our Tax Services, Malita Dreschler with the Office of General Counsel, and Tim Anderson with Procurement have all been great partners in facilitating this work. I also want to recognize Nick Meyer at Southeast, Jim Gobler at Winona State, and George Tippens and Brenda Norris at MSU Morehead, and all of their respective project teams for their willingness to try something new with these projects, and frankly, for their patience as we build out this program on the fly. With that, I want to thank you Chair Hipps and trustees for your support and your time this afternoon, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks so much, Ryan. And as you've gone on, started talking to the campuses beyond the three pilots that are there, any feedback that's coming from them of reasons why they're hesitant to, to move forward with a project like this? Or is it just, is it new enough that they're just starting to learn about it?
Yeah, I would, I would speculate that it's a combination of things. I think the new and different is probably one factor. If you're not familiar with this type of project, they are a little bit more complex than, than traditional projects. I think there's also just capacity concerns with, with taking on additional, additional projects. And there's also, you know, the financial implications of, you know, being willing and able to take on additional debt service with a project like this. But with these pilot projects, obviously, we're trying to demonstrate to some other campuses that might be more resistant that this is successful. And hearing things like President Jan's feedback, I think, is only going to spur more interest in, in the program.
So one of the risks is the sales pitch that overstates the savings. How do you mitigate that risk? And then you also said the vendors guarantee the savings? So is there a risk if I overstated, but I have to guarantee the savings?
Yeah. Chrissy Johnson, so these projects are a little, are different than a typical construction project where on a, on a traditional project, you have a scope defined from the very beginning. I want to build a new building. It has this program and things like that. With these programs, although campuses might have inclinations, or we want to explore solar, things like that, a lot of this, the scope isn't defined in the beginning, and you're bringing an expert on to sort of, you know, go under the proverbial hood and see what opportunities might exist in campus. And so without digging to an engineering level on every measure, an ESCO might come in and say, hey, that sounds like you've got a lot of really great opportunities on campus. You're going to save a ton of money. When you actually get down into the, into the details, maybe it's, it's less attractive than, than they might try to sell you, try to sell you on. So, and then when it comes to the guarantee, again, that, that sounds really good. The details of what that guarantee includes and doesn't include are really what you have to pay attention to. So our, so our approach to, to mitigate, to mitigating that is, is to really, is, yeah, is just to be really diligent at every, at every step of the way and to be really, to really dig into the assumptions that they made and make sure that everything is, is clearly delineated so that, that the campus or institution understands what they're signing up for and what their part of the deal is, right? What their operating assumptions or what, what they have to do to ensure that. Because if the savings aren't met, that there's always the potential that the ESCO can say, well, that's not part of my guarantee because of X, Y, and Z. So we're just trying to be as proactive and upfront, transparent about those things as we can.
So I have to tell you, first of all, that I was really excited when I saw this in our materials for a number of reasons. I think, Brian, I recall that we had an ESCO with McKinstry at Morris, and I can't remember the details, but I do recall that it also, this kind of work does require facilities people who are willing to kind of be bold, as you said in the beginning of your presentation. I was troubled a little bit in the previous part of the meeting when we approved the construction and the residence halls on the two campuses. I voted in favor of them. But I'm trying to figure out my responsibility as a trustee. And it, it does seem to me that whenever there is some kind of a, especially a new construction project, that we have the responsibility to ask for accountability in terms of carbon footprint reduction, in terms of energy savings, and in terms of the possibilities of the use of renewable energy, which isn't the same at all campuses. I understand there are really different wind conditions and, and other things. But I guess I'm just, I don't know that I'm asking you or I'm asking someone whether we have some policies or even practices that would guide us as trustees when these new projects come forward, that we can set an expectation to the proposers, that they do tell us about the work that they're doing in line with the state requirements related to 2030. So it's partly for me, it's trying to figure out my responsibilities as a trustee and how those translate then into what's being presented to us and the kind of information. But I'll, I'll just end by saying again, Brian, I'm sure you will appreciate this. I said, oh, my gosh, I'm so excited to see this in the package. So thank you.
There's a lot there. Let's see. I think we're, these have a long track record at other places of working well. And like we said, we had a good track record here at Minnesota State when the State Department of Commerce ran the program. And I don't know why they stopped doing it, but it was a, it was a great program for the state. I think there, somebody retired and they just ended the program. So we're trying to pick back up and rebuild what we used to be able to do under the state program. And so we've got great examples around the system. The, the development of non-university-owned facilities is an interesting one. And there's a difference between when, like at the Winona one here, that's, it's not our project. It's not on our land. We're just helping to operate it and manage it for somebody else. So that's sort of a different bucket than maybe one that's on our own campus. And so we've been having conversations with Mankato about design standards and what actually makes sense, given the kind of facility is and the life of the facility. And so there's a, there's an ongoing discussion there about a variety of things, sustainability and building systems and standards.
Other questions? Chrissy calls.
Sorry, I may have just not paid attention properly, but was your last comment suggesting that the Mankato Stadium and, and housing project that we heard about just a short time ago, are they evaluating how aspects of their project could utilize these strategies? And is that something that would be helpful in that kind of a project as a sort of front-end, front-end evaluation of, of proposed projects?
Chair Hipps, Trustee Coles, I think they could probably speak to their design process more accurately. But the ESCO kind of concept, the Guaranteed Energy Savings Program, is really designed for people who are trying to retrofit an existing building. My understanding is that in the construction of their new student housing facility, they've just engaged these kind of people on the front end to make sure that they design as efficient a building as they can for the life cycle of the building and the systems they're putting in.
I just, I just want to follow up, and our, our chair has left the room, but kind of what I'm hearing here and saying to myself is that then the responsibility is on us as trustees to ask these questions to make sure that we understand whether everything is being done that could be done to save those energy costs and also to, it, it is about saving money, and that's, I think, how you get buy-in. But it's also about doing the right thing, which I think we're committed to in other areas and should also be committed to in this area. But it's, it sounds like it's on us to ask those questions if we don't have policy or practice that drives us to that end. Does that sound right?
I guess the, the other piece I would say is, is as all these projects are coming forward, it's coming forward to Brian's team and to the, then the team. And I'm assuming that there is some sort of conversation that happens or that you look at with regards to sustainability or design standards or, or that piece, that there's, there's some sort of, that doesn't take it away from us to also need to ask those questions. But I'm hoping some of those questions are also getting asked before it even comes to us.
Chair Hipps, you're correct. We have a larger degree of involvement in university-owned projects, but we are involved in the conversations with the campuses on the ones that are foundation-led.
Just looking at, at time, I want to move us on to the, the next piece, but great conversation. Look forward to seeing it in November. No action needed for today. It is just informational. But there will be a contract that looks like coming in November for us to, to review. So with that, we will move on to the update for the F26 budget.
Thank you, Chair Hipps. I'm going to try to provide a really high-level overview of the board. Approve the fiscal year '26 operating budget at its June meeting. And now that we're well into fall semester and have a legislative session coming soon, would like to provide an update of some of the main variables we have related to the budget. So we're going to focus on state support, enrollment, and where we are with costs. So going back to our biennial budget request that the board submitted last November, $465 million and the four priorities, request areas that we had. We, we were able to bring forth some of these priorities into the capital program. Of course, we did not receive any funding from this request at the end of the '25 session, primarily due to the lack of resources that the state had available with, with the current economic condition. But nevertheless, our priorities in these request areas still remain areas where funding is needed for our colleges and universities. The critical infrastructure out of that $100 million in one-time investment, $25 million was part of the '26 capital program request that was approved by was part of the 26 capital program request that was approved by the board in June. So that's actively being advocated for now as part of the capital program. And then as the $40 million in workforce focused support, 13 and a half million of that was for enhancing learning environments. And in fact, yesterday, for sure, maybe in multiple presentations, but I know on the first one, for sure, that St. Cloud Technical and Community College did with Delta, that was an example of one of the areas of where that funding went last biennium of a private sector partner matching state funds. So we advanced that priority, that 13 and a half million as part of our capital program because we saw strong benefits from that across the state during '24 and '25. The area that we'll we'll focus on today is the student affordability and system operations, the $285 million. That was new funding requested essentially to cover cost increases of 5% each year of the biennium. And part of that student affordability portion of it was, we didn't, well, we didn't go in asking for tuition freeze. We did ask for that if we received strong funding in this area, that our tuition increases would be able to be limited. And of course, we we know that since we didn't receive funding, there was robust discussions last spring, and ultimately tuition was increased by an average of 5.5% across the the system. The reason I wanted to take a moment to go over this portion of it is, in the recent past, in the fall, we'd be coming forth with a supplemental budget request. And and we're not because we still have this particular request unfunded on the table that we will continue to advocate for in the legislature in the event there is funding that is available for any of these areas. I mentioned the two areas that went to the capital program, but nevertheless, these areas still remain priorities for our system. However, to submit another request at this time with the state's economic condition and the likelihood there'll be a significant amount of new funding available, the the recommendation was to move forward with continuing our advocacy in these areas. And that is, that has been typical, even in the recent past, we submitted supplemental budgets. There's other years when the state has been in similar economic conditions, we've employed a similar strategy of not submitting an additional request the year after our biennial request. So this isn't new ground by any means, but but not but ones that we haven't experienced for some time. So I mentioned the biennial budget outcomes. Again, we we had less money in our base. We talked a lot about that, setting up our budget for last year, that actually colleges and universities have less operating funding because 22 and a half million that was in the operating appropriation was one time, and that some of the tuition relief funding also was one time, 12 and a half million. And then the second two bullets show the results of last session where there was some one time funding to help with the PFAS issue at Lake Superior College. And then two appropriations that had been going to the Office of Higher Education were shifted to Minnesota State. So our students were benefiting at a similar dollar amount when the funding was with the Office of Higher Education, but in order to streamline it and be more efficient in administering it, the appropriations were now direct appropriations from higher ed, Office of Higher Ed to Minnesota State, but not necessarily new funding for us. So the the factors when approving the budget, and I did touch upon some of them, you know, I'd focus on the third one is, you know, last year, we had many conversations throughout the spring related to tuition and where where there was a place where we balanced student affordability with new operating revenue. And I and I suspect, and I think this year, there's definitely a desire for those conversations to happen much earlier. It was a burden on the college and universities last year to have this variable change so much on them throughout the planning process before final parameters were determined, really towards the end of the year. So this year, being a non-biennial budget year, as well as having the board, having the authority to set tuition without the legislature dictating it, there is more of an opportunity to have that discussion much earlier in the process. So we we hope those discussions could start as early as next month's board cycle. The other factors that we were looking at with the 26 budget, which I'll cover more a bit later, is insurance costs are expected to go up significantly. And then compensation projections that we were using at the time the state's contracts were still being bargained. And so we were projecting 3% total compensation increases, and I'll give an update in a future slide of where we seem to to be landing after most agreements have now been settled. I'm going to go over this one really fast, but this was the budget that you approved last June, where there was increases in revenue of about 2.6%. Expenses expected to go up about 4%. The budget gap or the use of reductions or fund balance was about $52 million. That was planned as as part of this approved budget. So the the revenues going up were on account of two main variables. One is an expectation that revenue or that rates were going to increase. I mentioned tuition, but also different types of fees. And then in addition, that enrollment was going to continue to grow. So since the budgets were approved, and now that we're in mid-October, and we'll drill a bit more into enrollment in a moment, but I want to talk about the second two items related to costs, is that insurance cost increases, and this this includes health insurance is the main driver, but health then to life. The costs ended up being significantly higher, even higher, slightly higher than the projections that were known in June. And that really reduced the flexibility in the ability to increase salaries and wages. So the board approved, for example, the Musaf bargaining agreement at the September board meeting, and the the salary components of it, the major ones, were a 3% increase in salary in the first year of the biennium and then a half percent in year two. And as an example, that still translates when you factor the insurances, it just takes up a larger portion of what it's been historically because of insurance going up 17% is that the total comp increases are more along the lines of 4% and 4% each year. The state classified settlements, as I chose in the third bullet, those came in at approximately 5% per year. The the compensation or the salary and wage increases were 1.5% in year one, 1.75% across the board in year two, and then additional steps if employees and those bargaining units asked me, may were eligible. But again, because of the insurance factor of it, much of that, much of that increase was absorbed in keeping the insurance program the same essentially as it was in '24 and '25. So in in relation to college and university budget planning, the overall cost estimates went up, I mentioned, 3% to, you know, somewhere between 4% or 5%, depending on the individual makeup of employees at each one of our colleges and universities. The enrollment projections, we have, we have good news to to share there for sure in that you you probably saw this week that enrollment numbers through Office of Communications and Marketing were sent out. And I would admit it's probably very confusing, depending on which area of the system you're talking about, or if you're talking to a president or CFO or enrollment manager, how you count enrollment. So we, in finance and how we report this to the state, we're we're counting annual full year equivalencies. So it as example, the report that went out this week about our 30 day numbers for fall focused primarily on fall semester enrollment, as well as the headcount of our of our students. Our calculations when we present budgets, full year equivalency is one undergraduate student equals 30 credits and one graduate student equals 20 credits. And then we back in to the number. So each institution has different ratios of how much headcount makes up one FYE, depending on, depending on their mission and their composition of students. So the projections we shared with you in June, when budgets were built as a system, enrollment was planning on going up on a full year basis. Now, this is summer as the first term, then fall, and then spring. So for right now, for fiscal year '26, summer's done, fall is well underway. So spring is the term that's outstanding, but institutions are registering students and that that enrollment is is being tracked. So we are projecting 1,000 or 116,420 of annual FYE for '26. When numbers were updated in October after the first terms enrollment were in, those numbers increased to 117,769. So that 1.7% increase in enrollment is now being projected to be 2.8% as of October. So it's a positive increase of 1.1%. And generally speaking, campuses tend to be more conservative in generating or in generating projections for a full year. So if we look at summer and fall, the chancellor referred yesterday of fall enrollment being up 4.2% in the state of the system, summer was up about 7%. So if spring comes comes in somewhere around fall was, we're likely to even exceed the 2.8% when we're providing you projections again this spring. We we go through this process of annual projections three times a year, October or September, October, February, March, and then May and June are the three times per year. And we report those to the state so they can also do projections related to the financial aid programs. Putting this over a longer horizon, and this is in your packet, attachment one lists this by institution, but if we look at enrollment based on the past 15 years or so, you can definitely see where the uptick has started to occur since fiscal year '23. So we had a period from 2013 to 2019 where enrollment was down every year, anywhere from 2 to 3 and 1/2% as a system. Then in the time period of 2020 to 2023, in FYES, that was in the midst of the pandemic, enrollment went down pretty significantly. We're in the middle of those four years, it was down 5.5% and 6.7%. So starting in 2024, as was mentioned, this is the third consecutive year that our enrollment will be up, 2.5% in 2024, 6.2% last year, and then as of right now, the the projection of it being up 2.8%. And then campuses project out or were required to into the future, so about 1.2% each year is projected for '27 and '28. And as as has been mentioned, a large part of it has to do with leveraging financial aid and other opportunities for students that weren't available prior to 2024 with the North Star Promise being a significant investment from the state that definitely has had an impact on our enrollment in a positive way and was implemented to start fiscal year 2025.
Vice Chancellor Mack, just a time check, we have just under 10 minutes.
When we reported during June, what type of budget balancing actions do campuses take to balance their budgets? And, you know, one of them, and the board approved some policy changes with our Board Early Separation Incentive, or informally known as the BESI program, last spring. As of October 10th, there were six colleges, one university, and the system office that have exercised those incentives to look at reducing long term costs. And since October 10th, I believe there's a few more institutions that have have proposed plans. But other other budget balancing actions are listed here. And I would ask my colleagues that are presidential liaisons to maybe just spend a minute or two talking about, you know, what they're thinking as related to budget planning, and in particular, what adjustments they make as they get better enrollment numbers coming into the year versus where they they started. So perhaps we'll we'll start with President Barant to talk about what's happening at Dakota and Inver.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Hipps and trustees. So when we develop our budgets, we make the best projections we can using the data we have, as well as working with the system, knowing that we're going to have to make adjustments because it just doesn't always come out the way we would predict. And so then what we do over the summer is we tier both investments as well as reductions. And then as the numbers come in 10th day and looking at the spring enrollments and things like that, we make those additional decisions, whether to go beyond just that primary tier where these are required investments we have to make, either because of compliance or because we, these are things that we we know will have a positive ROI. And then with same thing with reductions, we know there are things that we need to do now, we can do them, they'll have somewhat less impact on our ability to preserve students. And then as we see the budget unfold, we'll continue to make additional decisions so that we can get into balance.
At Winona State, we were, we started the year with a $2.2 million budget shortfall, given everything coming in. The positive thing is our freshman enrollment was up 12 and 1/2%, which really helped us out, giving us about 2 and 1/2% overall enrollment because of that freshman year then has to push out. So that was a really good positive thing, but we still had the budget deficit there. And so right now, we have a hiring freeze going on, so we're not doing any hiring. We've been looking at how to freeze some non-personnel budgets. We've asked facilities to hold off on large, major purchases, and we're just trying to see if we can make it through the year and recover that money. Given, give or take, most positions are around $100,000 once you do benefits. It's like, we already have like 16 openings, and so if we get a couple more, that'll help us out, at least to get close to coming in under budget, at least by the time we hit the end of the fiscal year. So but it's hard when the plane is flying to suddenly have to make changes to try and figure out how you're going to cover all your bills.
When I look at the I chart attachment one, over the last 13 to 15 years, we've lost about 20% of our enrollment overall. It's really nice to see the increases in the last few years. Are you looking at the increases as a way, as a stabilization of enrollment, meaning we've stopped the bleeding and the declines? Or is it, are you thinking it's going to be on an upward trend? I mean, given what I think we heard yesterday is our target audience of 18 to 35 year olds is shrinking demographically in the state.
Chair Hipps, Trustee Johnson, we, in in finance, we're definitely not the enrollment management practitioners or leaders. I, you know, I believe that the the fact that enrollment's recovered has been significantly positive in many different ways. And my understanding is that, you know, campuses are continuing to look for new markets of students, universities and graduate education, more focus online. You know, workforce PEL was was discussed this morning by senior Vice Chancellor Green Stephen. There's more relationships with high schools. So there's a lot of enrollment management strategies and a lot more attention probably paid to that now than there was 15 years ago on on that chart. I do think we still have, you know, the demographics, as was mentioned yesterday by Deed, is still a concern underlying, you know, all of our enrollment projections moving forward. But it is, it has been positive that campuses have had a positive track record recently and and at least project one into the near future.
Any other questions? We have about five minutes.
I just have a one wrap up topic here. So this is probably the lightest meeting of the cycle this year of talking about budget and finances. At the retreat, there were, there were many topics discussed, heavy strategic ones. At the retreat, there were, there were many topics discussed, heavy strategic ones, as well as several operational ones that we'll be presenting to the board over the course of the next several months in the near future. I mentioned talking about operating budget parameters for fiscal year '27, hopefully next month, and then financial statements through the Audit Committee are two that are upcoming yet this calendar year, and then the other big topics that have been discussed. I do want to spend a moment before concluding today's committee meeting related to the last bullet on here, which is monthly updates. And so, over the course of the summer, in working with Chair Hipps and Trustee Jana Johnson, is to try to come up with a way to provide the board with a snapshot of financial health each month. And so, we, and keep it on one page, which is a challenge for all of us in higher ed. So, we, we, there's one included in your packet this month as a, as a template and as a start of moving in that direction. And I'm sure there's, there's plenty of work to do. We've, we had several internal iterations of it, and I don't know if it could be put up on the screen real quickly. It is, it is in your, in your packet and on board, but really to just provide some high-level updates. And so, starting at the bottom of this sheet, so, you know, the federal shutdown is of significant, is significant right now. So, what impact does that have on Minnesota State? So, we mentioned that in the narrative, but trying to address that as something that perhaps trustees would be interested in, as well as a number of grants that have been affected based on, since January, related to some of the changes that have happened federally. And then state funding, has there been any state news that affects us? Now, the information on here is already, is outdated since this was published. I mentioned in my comments this morning that M and B published a new report on October 15th that that talks about the biennium ending with a general fund balance 941 million higher than estimated at the end of the session in June. So, that would, that would be something that I think is relevant information. And then more specific college and university update information. So, on the top part of it, you know, institutions that have done some major budgetary action and some, a lot of this has been out in the external media, and then tying it to, you know, looking at where things are located on internal websites. So, we mentioned, you know, two institutions in the first bullet, and then I mentioned the Bessis, which we talked about in our narrative, but if this wasn't a budget month, that would be something to include. And then with enrollment, you know, being, being asked of, okay, out of all the institutions, you see all the numbers, what are some deviations that happen from budget? So, we looked at if you're minus 2 to plus 2 versus where you projected. And there was a number of institutions, and you heard from President Barant at Dakota County, their projections were less optimistic in October than they were last June, but at Denver Hills, they were more optimistic. And he talked about how he, what actions he takes there. And then, and then institutions, you know, most of them are on the higher end exceeding projections, some are not. And so, one of the questions, you know, what does this all mean? And it really does matter at the institutional level, what it all means. Enrollment can mean a lot of different things depending on the institution, it's what type of enrollment. So, there's enrollment at some institutions that focuses heavily on, say, for college and the schools or concurrent enrollment, and the revenue per student is much less than it is if you were down in undergraduate students that come to your campus. So, I really, you need to really drill down a couple layers. In some cases, it may be one population is up a bit and another one's drastically down. So, the budget impacts aren't as significant as it would appear just looking at one enrollment number. In any case, for this month, this is, this was an idea to share this regular update as part of the packet and then touch upon it in comments at the beginning of each Finance and Facilities Committee as we go throughout the year. So, I just wanted to introduce that and explain it a bit, and I'll turn it over to Chair Hipps to add anything related to this particular item or if there's any additional questions for me before we conclude today's meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Mackey. I would love feedback from the, from the trustees and from the committee with regards to the one-pager. This is, we've gone through a couple iterations of it already, but always looking for more feedback. So, sharing, sharing insights with myself, I'll make sure to get them to Vice Chancellor Mackey, and we'll continue to evolve this as we go. I think we are at the end of the agenda for ours. Any last-minute questions before we wrap this up and then move into the full meeting? Seeing none, that will conclude the Finance and Facilities, and I'll turn it over to Chair Soul.
Okay, we'll take, start five minutes.
Okay, good afternoon. I will call the meeting, the October meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. And trustees, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'll call the role of the trustees to note your attendance. Trustee Elarcon, trustee Kohl's.
Here.
Trustee Earl, or Vice Chair Erlinson is at an A C C T conference. Trustee Gorbowska.
Here.
Trustee Hipps.
Here.
Trustee Janasich. Trustee Jack Wilton-Johnson. Trustee Jana Johnson. Trustee Mo. Must have stepped out. Trustee Richter. Trustee Sharon. Trustee Teffer.
Here.
Trustee Tully is also at the A C C T conference. The chair is here. So, welcome, everyone. We'll start by.
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she's not on your list.
Well, and by the way, welcome, Trustee Specht. Welcome to your first official Board of Trustees meeting. We're happy to have you. Thank you. All right, now, we will start with comments from our student associations and bargaining units, and we'll start with LEED MN, treasurer and president, I think are appearing with for us virtually. So.
Chair Soul.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, sorry. Hello, Chair Soul, thank you, as well as thank you to the board of trustees member.
There.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you, guys. So, I would like to start off by saying thank you to Chair Soul and the members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Rose Sargent, and I am the treasurer for LEED Minnesota. LEED Minnesota has been enjoying a very busy fall. We have been traveling across the state, engaging with our students in programs, events, and opportunities. During welcome weeks, we visited 24 campuses and got to conduct, or got to connect with 1,474 students already this year through tabling at their campus events. We were also invited to visit seven campuses where we hosted 10 different skill-building workshops and two community hangout activities. We also held, have held three virtual skill-building workshops so far this year. In the past year, I have gotten to see, or to watch LEED MN undergo a good deal of system changes and develop our new structures, programs, and outreach methods, and it is paying off. Students are showing up and speaking up. They are concerned and want to use their voices and experiences to impact policy here in Minnesota. Along that line, we are holding our Fall General Assembly Advocacy in Action next month. We are excited to co-host this event with Students United as well as the System Office. We have increased our capacity over 100% from last fall. However, shortly after opening our registration for this event, we did actually fill all of our spots entirely, and we have an ever-growing waiting list, which is so exciting. With this in mind, we have picked our location for our Spring General Assembly so that attendance capacity should not be an issue moving forward. Additionally, students unable to attend our GAs in person are now able to work through any of our five different learning tracks on our website at their own pace for our certificate program. Lastly, we would like to touch on basic needs for students. We are excited to, we were excited to hear the updates on hunger-free campus grants to learn that nearly every one of our campuses submitted a student-centered proposal and will be able to turn around and meet student needs. It's rewarding that our student and advisor efforts and testimony at the state capitol last year helped hunger-free campus appropriations go directly through the MinState system so that the process was smoother and faster this year, helping get food into students' hands. While all of that is great news, it also points to the depth of need that exists on our campuses. With the ongoing federal government shutdown and impending interruptions to SNAP benefits, the strain on resources will only increase. When LEED Minnesota conducted our survey of, on MinState five-year priorities, basic needs access was near the top of nearly every response, and we are seeing and hearing firsthand on our campuses from our friends and classmates how meeting those basic needs of food security, housing stability, reliable transportation, and affordable and flexible childcare remain a source of uncertainty and anxiety, as well as a barrier to student success. We are grateful for the work our system has done to address these basic needs, and we will keep telling our stories and advocating for what we need, so it will remain a priority going forward. And finally, I would like to share just a bit of my personal experience with this here today with you. As a student leader on my campus, I spend a fair bit of time connecting students to resources. This fall, I'm seeing the needs of students grow exponentially, and in the last two weeks, I've seen an even more concerning trend, a trend of students watching carefully planned budgets crumble as a large portions of the funds they have earmarked for food become a question mark. This is on top of issues like lack of health coverage, balancing school with multiple jobs, and finding adequate childcare or any number of additional obstacles students face. So, if I could leave the board with one thought to move forward with today, it would be to ask yourselves what we are asking ourselves as student leaders, as Senate members, and as the Board of Directors for LEED MN. What can we do as individuals and organizations to fill this gap for students until the federal government is back at work? Whether that it looks like food drives or partnerships with local businesses to help meet student needs, I feel any difference we can make for our students in this time of uncertainty would do a lot to not only help their immediate circumstances, but also help students feel cared for and seen in the face of cuts to so many basic needs programs. Once again, I would like to thank you all for your time in letting me come to speak with you, and I hope you will take this into consideration. Thank you so much for all the hard work you continue to do, and just from the students, we deeply appreciate it. So, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much, Rose. Okay, is there anyone, any other comments from LEED MN? Rose has got it covered. Okay, great, thank you. Students United, we'll hear from M. Hodges.
First off, it's Hodge, not with an S, but second of all, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I will start with my remarks then. Dear Chair Soul, Chancellor Olson, and members of the board. First off, thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. It was really great. It was really great to see you and listen to everybody speak as well as go on that MSP airport tour, that was so awesome. And I unfortunately couldn't join you in person today as I have to balance my commitments with my other job here at the MSU Women's Center. Actually, you might see people running in and out of the background, so apologies about that. But it was so great meeting you and spending time with everybody there yesterday. And again, my name is M. Hodge. I am the State Chair of Students United and I am pursuing my master's in social work at Minnesota State University Mankato. Now, before I give my remarks, I wanted to recap about who Students United is and what we do in case there were folks unable to attend the meeting last month. So, Students United was established in 1967 and is a 501(c)(3) and we are the official voice of roughly 65,000 students of the seven four-year Min State universities. We are recognized not only by you as the Board of Trustees, but also by the Minnesota Legislature as the students, as we are the students' representative and advocates as well. Our work is to represent and advocate for future, present, and former students in issues that affect them at the system, state, or federal level. We are a student-led organization. Every student at our schools is a member of our organization as they pay a small credit fee to help fund our work. Our Board of Directors are the student body presidents of each university and we also have three student officers, which you might see my vice chair there in person today, elected by the board, which makes this organization unique in how it's led, influenced, and brings about change. Our board is who provides direction, vision, and sets the priorities of our organization and our officers work to facilitate that work. And also to give a shout out, you saw one of our board members, Sophia Crowe, speak earlier here today. Additionally, we are supported by full-time staff. For example, we have Adam Thompson somewhere in the audience there, who is our Systems Relations Manager, who helps advocate for us when we are on our campuses or pursuing our education. Now, to give you some updates from the last time we saw you, we just finished our Fall 2025 Campus Visits, visiting each of our seven universities. We met with university presidents and their cabinets, a multitude of student support offices, academic colleges, faculty and staff partners, and of course, the students across those seven campuses. In total, we had about 30 meetings that will help inform our legislative and system priorities that we will present to you later this year. But as we continue identifying our takeaways and action items, I wanted to share some of the things that we heard from students that also Lead MN touched on here earlier here today. The first off is basic needs. The use and needs for services like food pantries, emergency grants, and student-parent support has again increased this year. These services have been critical to helping students thrive and keeping students in schools and we will continue to advocate for maintaining and expanding these services. The second thing was student affordability, a lot of students touched on. Students are struggling to meet the high cost of higher education due to inflation and the cuts from the government, which are harming students' ability to continue their education. Students asked us to continue supporting policies like the North Star Promise and the Student-Teacher Stipend Program to help alleviate their affordability issues. The third point was international students' rights. A lot of international students came up to us and there's a lot of uncertainty around the protections of international students and we have been speaking out against creation of status changes and have continued offering opportunities to international students. Our fourth thing is there was concerns about program closures. Students were requesting clear communication, whether that's on programs closing, staffer-faculty layoffs, or even internal policies that affect student opportunities as well. And again, we will continue to reflect on what we heard from these visits. And though the responses, and oh my gosh, through the responses to our all-student survey, we'll make a robust agenda of our priorities. I did want to share some of the motions our board has already passed this year and there are three I'll read here. They asked our staff to research the issues of housing, student borrower protection, and increasing access to fresh foods on campus. They also directed our organization to continue working on expanding open educational resources. And lastly, at our October board meeting on Monday, our board passed a resolution around student affordability, tuition, and increasing state funding. The financial burden of increased tuition is felt by our students and the state is not meeting its promise of covering 67% of the cost of tuition. We are going to start working on creating a campaign toward the goal of achieving a fully funded tuition freeze in the next legislative biennium. We will update you as we collect more student feedback and as our work continues. I would like to invite you also to join Students United and Lead MN's advocacy and action conference on November 7th through the 8th at our joint conference that will bring together nearly 300 students from across our systems. It would be great, it would be a great opportunity to hear directly from students and we have shared some information with Carrie that she will pass on as well. Lastly, I wanted to thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you and for giving me the platform and opportunity to make my boyfriend, who is an aviation management major, extremely jealous with that airport tour yesterday. But besides that, I can't wait to see you all in November. And if you want to reach me, my email is statechair@studentsunited.org. And I appreciate all of you listening here today. And that is all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, M., for your presentation. We've got Ask Me Down here for no remarks this month. IFO, Jenna Chernega, President.
Good afternoon, Chair Soul, members of the board, Chancellor Olson, my colleagues from MSCF who are behind me. My name is Jenna Chernega, I'm the president of the IFO. You don't often hear me get frustrated in these comments that I make to the board, but I'm afraid I'm going to be frustrated today. Yesterday, Chancellor Olson's remarks talked about how we fly airplanes and needing to have thrust and lift and to avoid spinning and flapping, right? And unfortunately, I feel like we are doing an incredible amount of spinning and flapping and not putting that energy into thrust and lift. Certainly, the faculty of the Minnesota State Universities would like to engage in efforts that help us soar. We would like to do that in ways that really center our students. And I think we've proven that we do those things, that we have engaged actively in Equity 2030, that we have enthusiastically been working on the General Education redesign program because we think it's so important for students to have the skills and ideas to shape their 21st century lives. However, there are other things going on that feel really extraneous and in fact, counterproductive. You are perhaps aware that the interfaculty organization has opposed the Common Course Numbering activities going on in the System Office. Our concerns with Common Course Numbering go back many, many years, but were most recently expressed in 2023 from the Transfer Governance Team when they voted to greenlight a pilot program with three of our transfer pathways and six courses. All of the faculty on the Transfer Governance Team voted against that pilot and the IFO and MSCF both submitted comments indicating why we were opposed to Common Course Numbering. It was not because we are opposed to easy transfer, but it was because we had listened to the very research that the Transfer Governance Team had presented. They had looked at all 50 states and whether their systems had engaged in Common Course Numbering and then looked to find out what that process had looked like for them. If you look at Common Course Numbering online, you will find lots of statements like "Common Course Numbering will do things," "It should do things," "It can make transfer easier," "It may make things easier for our students." But almost no has. Almost no Common Course Numbering has improved transfer rates anywhere. No indication that Common Course Numbering has reduced equity gaps in any system. There's little to no evidence that Common Course Numbering improves transfer rates, closes equity gaps, improves student experience or satisfaction, or helps with student retention. And this might be surprising because it feels like it should. But I'm a sociologist and we are experts at looking at things that feel like they should do something, but actually don't when you research them. So, we expressed at that time several concerns. Primary amongst them was the lack of evidence of efficacy. Secondly, the, we believe that this would limit innovation for faculty. Once we have determined course equivalencies and given them numbers that are equivalent across the system, what do we do with a faculty member wants to change their course? Eliminate some student learning outcomes, add in new ones as disciplines change and we want to stay up to date? We were also concerned because we feel like we were doing more impactful things with our energy, time, and money as a system and that Common Course Numbering would distract away from it. That's especially true because Common Course Numbering is an activity that highlights the tensions between groups of faculty, brings them to the forefront, and causes conflict. We also believe that it would limit institutional distinctiveness by flattening curricular differences. Unfortunately, after expressing those concerns, we've received no answers about how they might be addressed. We haven't received any new information that Common Course Numbering is effective at the goals we would like it to achieve. We've received no information about what happens if we have to change courses or want to do something differently from our colleagues in other campuses. We have actually seen as the System Office has redirected resources away from some of the good work we're doing on things like general education in order to create time and space to do Common Course Numbering. Trustee Teffer mentioned earlier that the surge might cause problems with faculty and staff who are already overworked. We feel like Common Course Numbering is absolutely part of the burnout that our faculty are experiencing and it will only heighten that. Increasingly, our faculty are expected to do more with less and we often do because we care about our students. And often, I think administrators simply expect that we will continue to do those things because we care about our students, whether we're compensated for them or not. But this is causing burnout and folks to leave the profession at great numbers. I can provide materials from the Transfer Governance Team meetings, the memos that both the IFO and the MSCF sent, our comments at that time. But the Transfer Governance Team did pass a pilot at that time for three of our transfer pathways and six courses in them. My assumption would be that they would proceed with that and we would get data from what that pilot would look like. How did it go? How easy was it? Did it cause any problems? Unfortunately, that pilot never occurred and instead it has grown into 53 courses now across multiple disciplines, some of our most transferred courses across almost every college area in any university. That's not what the Transfer Governance Team proposed as a pilot. They proposed something much smaller and we're embarking on this much larger project without the data from the pilot that was initiated two years ago. We still have concerns about this project and now they are heightened because we are watching as other things are happening in our world. Last month, you heard me talk about federal-level actions and that were concerning to us and that have continued to be concerning to us. It's frustrating that there has not been any communication about any of those topics and I'm especially concerned about things like the H1B visa fee of $100,000 per application. Many of our campuses hire 10, 12 international faculty. I think Metro has 17 this year. At $100,000 apiece, that could be up to $1.7 million worth of fees just for people to apply for visas. We've seen a little bit of good news on the national level. Apparently, the fee does not apply to those who are already in the United States on an F-type visa, which is a student-type visa. So, if folks are coming out of an educational institution and already here, they don't have to pay that fee. But it still will apply to non-citizens who live overseas. And I don't believe that they've lifted the limit. Currently, H1 visas are limited to 85,000 across the country in every industry. Higher education has historically had an exemption from that limit, but I do not, the new guidelines have put higher education into that bucket again. So, we are in competition with every other industry in the country and that has not changed. We need to figure something out about this. We cannot function as a system like ours without international faculty. They both bring vibrancy to our campuses, provide perspectives that our students need, and quite frankly, staff an enormous number of majors that we cannot find faculty for any other way. Our computer science majors, our engineering majors, the cybersecurity programs that we've been so excited about, these are largely staffed by international faculty and without them, we won't be able to continue. We also have watched as the Trump administration has put forward what we're calling the McMahon-Mailman Compact, a compact that they've asked campuses to sign in order to get benefits in terms of federal funding. This started with just nine schools, but after MIT declared that they were not going to sign the compact, the Trump administration got nervous that no one would and so they expanded it out to everybody in the United States. Any school, anywhere is supposed to be allowed to sign the compact. I'm confident that our system does not have interest in this. However, this fight is bigger than just us. This is really a national fight for the heart and soul of higher education in the United States. And we're in that fight. The IFO is an independent union and as such, I get invited to the meetings with Randy Weingarten from AFT and Todd Wolfson from AAUP and AFSMI is involved, and NEA is involved, and UAW is involved. We are all in that fight, filing lawsuits, creating action statements, working on our campuses to try to push back. And where are you? Where are you in that fight? At some point, the "please don't look at us" strategy is not going to work any longer. They've come for Harvard, they've come for Columbia, they've come for the University of Virginia and the University of Texas-Austin. They will come for us eventually and they will attack us for the very things that we hold dear, our plans around Equity 2030, the openness of our classrooms, the fact that we educate students where they're at across the state of Minnesota. They will hate us for this and they will come for us. And we need to stand up in a way that is bold to fight back. The IFO has long prioritized academic freedom, faculty control of the curriculum, and the compact is an obvious attack on those key values. Our reaction to the full steam-ahead approach to Common Course Numbering is also a reaction to what feels like a process that will stifle faculty innovation and autonomy. Campuses have also been engaging in tactics that concern us. Mankato's retrenchment is happening without a budgetary need. There is no budget deficit at Mankato. They have said so out loud at Meet and Confer with their Faculty Association. They have an increase in enrollment and you, this body granted them the largest tuition increase in the state at your meeting in June. And yet, they are laying off seven faculty members because they want to redirect resources away from those areas, areas like women and gender studies and Latin American history. They are endangering their Indigenous Studies program in a state like Minnesota and in a town like Mankato, where the largest public hanging of people happened when 38 Dakota men were hung. And they may not be able to continue that Indigenous Studies program because they would like to reallocate resources away. Earlier, we were joking about a Ferris wheel. And I just want to make sure folks know that those seven faculty members watch these meetings as we talk about those things. London has one. Mankato should. Metro State has proposed a new curriculum process that eliminates the faculty curriculum committees. This is unheard of in our system. Faculty have to have control of the curriculum because we're the experts in what the curriculum is. And course-wise, the program that Ginny Arthur was presenting about, that sounds very appealing and for which she deserved accolades at this table, has not been talked to the faculty about. It was the first time that I was hearing about it and when I messaged my colleagues at Metro, they did not know about it. So, a tool was chosen to be looked into, a grant was received, and at no point were faculty consulted about this tool that will be used to do faculty work. Ginny will never use this tool because she does not deal with transfer and she doesn't. evaluate courses for equivalency. But faculty will use the tool. I have concerns about workforce PEL. It was explicitly created in order to provide money for for-profit institutions that have been locked out of PEL grants ever since the federal government stopped authorizing them at the state level. And I want to make sure that even as we need more money, we are not succumbing to tactics that put us in like positions to our for-profit competition in order to get that money. For us, these are all the same battle. They're a battle for academic freedom, the freedom of students to learn, and faculty control of the curriculum. I'd be happy to engage in a larger session about this in the future, to talk offline about any of these issues or provide more information. But we are -- we believe we're in a fight for the literal lives of higher ed in this country, and we need you there with us. Thank you.
Okay, is that all? Chair Sol, trustees, chancellor, thank you. My name is Nicole Emerson. I'm the Minnesota State MAPE Meet and Confer Chair. I sit here representing 2,100-plus MAPE members in our system and appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Division doesn't become us, and I'm quoting my fellow colleagues behind me, "We are stronger together." And I not only say that as a union member, but I say that as a member of the system and a representative here as a conduit between our MAPE members and yourselves. So I sit here in solidarity with my MSCF colleagues. As of today, their bargaining efforts have stopped. They deserve a fair contract, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear on my end and MAPES. We also stand in solidarity with Jenna from the IFO and the remarks she just made. You're going to hear similar ones from me. I was seeing and witnessing some of the presentations today, and I don't envy you because there were a lot of competing presentations. We'll start with the Audit Committee on Next Gen Student. We're in a critical phase because we lack resources of people. But then, when I see the budget presentation, four of the five bullet points is freezing, hiring, is offering Bessies. The workload, I've already kind of discussed many times at this table, is only getting worse. And with what I've witnessed today, we lack people, but we're freezing positions and not hiring. Okay? So my question to you with that particular area is, what are we going to let go of? What are we going to stop doing? Because our people can't take on more. We're already -- South Central has made it clear, that's where I work, we can't lose any more people. But then you're seeing numbers increase, enrollments increasing, students are increasing, right? So then, that's more on top of what we're already doing, on top of the other jobs we're already filling, right? So people, you know, they're watching these presentations, they're seeing what's at your door, and they're watching. What are we going to do about this puzzle that we're facing? We are definitely spinning, and we are definitely not soaring because there's division. There's absolute division, and we need to come together, and we are stronger together. I have to look at my notes so I don't lose my spot. This is an urgent need to invest in adequate staffing. That's number one, absolutely. Workday HR finance is still causing issues on our campuses. Workflows are longer, not shorter, right? So what are we doing about that? Many MAPE feel that their unique challenges and voices are not being adequately heard. Campuses and the System Office need more tailored solution and better representation in decision-making. I -- from the -- my members on committees and boards at the System Office, their voices are not priority. It's the folks that work at the System Office. It's their meeting, it's their decision-making. My people don't feel like they have even a voice there. There's a growing concern over the lack of communication and transparency from the System Office, and I've said this in our Meet and Confers as well, it's not new. MAPE members and AFSMI members, the information isn't flowing the way you might think it is. How do we make that better? How do we make communication and transparency better? The "do more with less" argument is no longer viable, not only with Workday, but with our campuses. We also have many toxic workplaces across the state. Respectful workplace complaints are being submitted against supervisors and administrators, and not a lot of action is happening from that. There's a growing concern that campus administrators are not being held accountable for fostering a healthy work environment. Staff are increasingly frustrated with leadership that fails to engage with or support our frontline workers. Campus morale is low, and employees are questioning whether administrators are truly aware of or responsive to the daily struggles staff face, especially with the implementation of the complex systems like Workday. The lack of progress in addressing these fundamental issues is eroding confidence in the system and adding unnecessary stress to staff who are already overwhelmed. These issues need immediate attention to avoid further burnout and a breakdown in operational efficiency. The "do more with less" approach is not sustainable and is harming both the morale and productivity of our employees. We request that the board looks at staffing in a serious way. We also call for a reevaluation of administrative structures and accountability for administrators across the system. What can we operationalize that makes sure that if an employee, a staff member of MAPE, is being disrespected in the workplace, that respectful workplace violations submitted are taken seriously, because they're not. Finally, we need a clear plan for addressing campus concerns, more process-driven, policy-driven, more localized support in implementation of Workday services, other major initiatives. We can't keep adding and adding and adding, not just here, not just at the system level, but on campuses too. We can't. If we don't have the resources, because all these things cost money. We have some people who have departments with no budget, and we saw on that list that we're freezing budgets, right? So how are they supposed to accomplish anything for students, for their area, if their budgets are being cut or completely eliminated? Why? It doesn't make sense. So those are the things I wanted to talk about today. Again, thank you so much for letting me speak, and if anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Mr. Chair, Chancellor Olson, trustees, and MSCF colleagues, my name is Kevin Lenz. I'm the president of the Minnesota State College Faculty, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Any other day, I would forego my comments, my planned comments, and simply say to you I stand in support of my colleague Jenna. I suspect, however, that expectations go a bit beyond that for me today. So I'd like to offer the voices of faculty, MSCF faculty, on two key topics. One of those is payroll errors, and we've talked about this over and over and over again. I'm not going to go over all the stuff we've talked about over and over and over again. What I'd like to do today is share the voices of faculty who are actually impacted by this. You heard earlier that 502 of our faculty either didn't get paid at all or weren't paid correctly at the beginning of the school year, and that has all kinds of cascading effects. We're in insurance and that kind of thing. A couple of faculty were willing to, excuse me, share their stories with me. I asked them if it would be okay to share them with you. I've edited a bit for brevity and clarity, but these are their words. Not paying people is wrong, to be clear, but not paying people at the start of either semester adds another layer of harm. When fall semester starts, it's back-to-school season. We intentionally put off most back-to-school shopping for our three kids because we know the first check from my college will be tiny. That tiny check could have purchased their shoes, though. Last year, errors in processing caused me to miss paychecks into October because they had wrongfully retracted the employer benefit contribution without telling me they had done so. Only after I persistently dug into this did they decide it was a mistake and give me any back pay. There were absolutely bills going unpaid while those thousands of dollars was missing from our income due to their errors. Not only that, but because we have gone back to work, we can no longer claim the unemployment benefits Minnesota allows for adjunct faculty over the summer or in-between semesters. As a result, we are working and thus have to report this as having earnings in that period, but are then getting zero income. When you delay processing on time for spring semester, families have just gone through holiday season and all of those associated expenses. Not paying people on time in this economy is cruel. Someone missing a $200 check is now missing groceries that week, even if they are fortunate enough to be in a dual-income household. Because work is so uncertain for contingent staff, I feel I have little room to say I won't work if they aren't going to pay me and have my assignment processed on time. In any other situation, this would have consequences for the employer, but this is set up such that only the employee suffers, especially the contingent employee. I have worked as an adjunct in this system since 2014. I have put in so many extra hours, volunteered for so many committees, taken on extra projects, et cetera, because I love my job and I want to do what is absolute best for those students, and because I continue to hold out hope of an unlimited full-time position. It feels downright awful that my employer doesn't value that effort enough to process my pay on time or to even bother letting me know that there was a missed processing deadline. Not once in my many years of dealing with various processing issues has HR contacted me when these errors happen. I have to go digging when I see my pay amount is off or missing altogether, trying to figure out what is going on, and I have to reach out to them when this happens. Sometimes there are reports I can use for this, sometimes there are not, giving us even less access to information. Second faculty member. I am a college faculty member from Minnesota State. I teach part-time temporary, so my credit load fluctuates. Therefore, I have been on my husband's insurance for the last 20 years or so. Last January or February or so, I was put on a plan of my own. This happened because my credit load increased in spring semester. I did not receive a waiver in the mail, so I did not waive the insurance. I was not charged for the new plan, except for a single $20 charge on May 16th. That was the day my new insurance card arrived as well. Was I ever surprised? I had no idea that this had happened because I had used my insurance under my husband's account since the previous fall with no problem. I attempted to cancel this new insurance since I hadn't used it and didn't want it, but I was told that I could not. The next big hurdle was my attempt to determine if I would have insurance over the summer. I was told to check if there had been a balloon payment, but the $20 charge didn't seem like a balloon. On August 4th, a message appeared in Workday asking if I wanted to waive my insurance. This was terrifying because now that I had been removed from my husband's insurance, I would be left without any at all. I therefore left the message alone, doing nothing at all lest another error occur. Now I find that my first paycheck of the new semester never came. I checked with Human Resources and was told that they have no idea why this happened, but when they checked on it, it was noted that there was no health insurance deduction. And I'm now wondering with all this delayed billing if I'm even going to have enough money to live on. I understand that me continuing to talk about this issue quite likely might result in diminishing returns, or at some point, if I keep going, a backward-bending effect. But my conscience won't let me stop because harm like this occurs to people every semester, and once again, I ask you to intervene and change the fundamental structure that leads to it. The second topic I'd like to talk about today is bargaining. And I have to start by noting that for me, this is a 180-degree shift in approach. Over the 30-plus years I've been doing bargaining, I have never come to this table and talked about bargaining. But what has happened this round is we have been told directly multiple times that if we don't like the amount of money that has been offered in the bargaining process, to not take it up with Labor Relations, but instead, take it up with you. So here we are. Not everyone who wanted to be here today could be, but they sent messages via postcards. I'll leave these with Carrie. I ask that you read them, and I ask that you respond. To inform your discussions going forward, I'd like to offer some financial data and ask that you give it some consideration. My goal is to focus on a few key numbers, recognizing that you don't have any of these numbers in front of you, and it's very hard to listen to me just rattle off numbers and make sense of it. So I'm going to try to emphasize some very specific things and make this as simple a construct as I possibly can, because again, I know you don't have the numbers in front of you. What I would like to do is compare growth in system revenue to growth in expenditures on total compensation for faculty. I am measuring system revenue by two factors, two primary factors. One of those is appropriation, and you saw a chart in the last committee meeting about appropriation between 2014 and 2024, and that's the period I'm using for comparison. I saw that on the chart and thought it was appropriate. And by tuition and fees revenue, as captured on the system's audited financial statement. So all I did was grab those numbers off those charts and add them together and say, "That's a revenue measure." I realize it's not a complete measure, but it is really where the majority of revenue comes from, and certainly the part that's relevant to faculty. Then I took data that we get from bargaining through a data request about the total expenditures on MSCF faculty in those same periods. And so I started in that 2014 year, and I thought, okay, what, as a sort of proportional sense, what percentage of that revenue figure is MSCF salaries? The answer was 30%. Then I looked at revenue growth between 2014 and 2024 in the system. That revenue growth was $330.3 million, revenue growth during that time period. If that 30% figure were to hold proportionate for faculty against that $330 million to 2024, you would expect that expenditures on MSCF faculty would have gone up by $99-plus million. What actually happened was expenditures went up $18.9 million, an $80 million shortfall against a proportionate increase. An $80 million shortfall against a proportionate increase to revenue. To try to create some context for that, I decided to pick another employee group that we have data on. Again, we get this data through bargaining requests. And that is system administration. And when I say that, I mean, everybody who's classified as administrator in the system. It's not just system office. It's everybody in the system. And in 2014, those expenditures on system administration were 6.7% of revenue. So again, proportionately against the 330 million, 6.7%. You would expect growth of 22.1 million dollars by 2024. The actual growth was 32.7 million dollars, 10.6 million dollars more than proportional. We lose 80 million relative. They, that group gains 10 million relative. There's an old adage that says how an organization spends its money is a reflection of its values. Right now, spending choices in this system devalue M S C F faculty. I, we respectfully request that you reconsider your spending decisions as it relates to our bargaining, both in this round and going forward. Thank you.
Um, thank you Chair, Sole trustees, guests, M S C F. Great to have you here in the room. Thanks for coming to this. Yesterday I I spoke a little bit about the importance of our constitutional rights and the right to. Assemble and the right to petition and the right to speak. And that's what we see being played out here. And I think it's great. So the ability of, for those of you who maybe didn't hear the remarks yesterday. Our ability to do better is contingent on our ability to listen to folks who disagree, who criticize, who critique. Who have alternative ideas, better ideas. And through that process, such as you have witnessed here. Uh, we strive to do better, to be better, uh, acknowledging that it's not perfect. And that these are the processes we have to do that. And it's a healthy thing. It's a healthy thing. And so we're glad you're here to be a part of that conversation. You know, we might disagree about the efficacy of an initiative and whether the evidence supports or doesn't support it. That's fair. And we have processes like this so that we weigh evidence and debate evidence and make decisions going forward. And so I'm grateful for the feedback that we get from I F O saying, we don't think this works. And that's a conversation about from with others who think it does work. And that's a conversation that needs to continue. Nicole, you asked, what won't we do? Because of the added pressures on your members and everybody, and that's totally fair. Right now, the the presidents in the Leadership Council are working with the vice chancellors to answer your question. They're going through the things that we do as a system office, the things we do as a system and trying to prioritize them and try to identify things. That maybe we do differently or don't do at all and other things perhaps that need greater investment, which I'm sure you would agree that some areas need greater investment. And I would think any of the presidents or vice chancellors here could tell you more about that process. We call them. Leadership action teams or L A Ts. So that's the code we use for that. But that's a process that's going kind of quickly among that group to take a look at it. And I think by uh, by the end of December, we'll have some recommendations from the Leadership Council on what are things that maybe we don't do. You know, the the effects of payroll errors are huge and egregious and unacceptable, and we agree. No debate. And that's why um, the vice chancellors are are working on a continuous quality improvement to payroll. Again, I think Vice Chancellor Davis could talk to any of you during the break about about it, but we're. We're kind of going back to the drawing board and asking, what is it about the way we do payroll that leads to some of the problems that we have? And uh, rethinking the whole thing. So we'll, again, I'm in agreement with what um, with what Kevin's saying out there. And Kevin, um, next time we get together, I'm not sure quite when that's scheduled. Next time we get together, let's go over the numbers you just did here. And um, so I can better understand them and look at them kind of more, you know, more broadly. You were zeroing in on the M S C F and administrator sections of that, but I'm, there may be other dynamics in those numbers. That um, that would help me understand better what's going on. Um, a series of, so thank you, all of you. A series of thank you. So um, President Bernt, thank you for your hospitality over these couple of days. It's great to be here. Thanks to all the D C T C crew. Well, thanks to Darren. He's hiding in there. Thanks Darren for your help. Um, thanks to Carrie and Amanda, of course, for everything needed. I really want to signal out Bernie and I see Jamie. I I'm. I know Bernie was in the back before, but I really want to signal out Jamie Simmison and Bernie who's out in the hallway. For the very hard work they did to get us into the airport and have that adventure yesterday. Thanks also to the Metropolitan Airport Commission. And to the colleges and the university that presented their St. Cloud Technical and Community College, like Superior College. Minneapolis College and M S U Mankato all talked about how they serve the transportation industry and that was terrific. Uh, we're still in the midst of executive searches. Uh, we're, the St. Cloud State search is on a much accelerated timeline. So um, I think I'm having a conversation tomorrow with the. Um, our search consultants to talk about uh, where they are in that process with the search advisory committee. I was down at Southwest Minnesota State University in Marshall for listening sessions. The listening sessions we have done have been well attended. Huge numbers of people turning out uh, to tell us what they think St. Cloud State needs, to tell us what they think Southwest needs. I'm going up next week for a grand tour of Minnesota North, starting out at Rainy and. Going to every single campus of of Minnesota North College for listening tours. And then later, Minnesota State College Southeast and Normandale. Uh, thanks to everybody who's attended any of those. Uh, bonding. Um, the House Capital Investment Committee is doing its tour there today. In the southwest section of the state, they're going to the southeast next. Uh, they attended a ribbon cutting at Vermilion. They attended a groundbreaking at Alex. I was there for that too. They celebrated some HEPER projects at our two St. Cloud schools. Uh, they toured Weld Hall, I think in Morehead, didn't they? Yeah, okay. And um, and we're hoping for a good bonding season, HEPER dollars, as well as some projects that are on the list. I had the opportunity to attend um, Pine Technical College, Technical and Community Colleges 60th anniversary. It was terrific. Um, in the interest of time, I won't tell a heartrending story about it, but if anybody's curious about that, I'll, I can tell you that after we're done. Um, we are working on workforce P L. Thank you, Jenna, for your comments about it, your worries about it. Um, the 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 rulemaking is still going on, so we don't even have guidance or guidelines on it yet, not, aren't sure quite what it's all going to be. But we will be on top of that and make sure that um, deservedly, we get what we should. Last thing. So uh, Joy, last night at dinner, some of the trustees and I went out to dinner last night. At the Mason Jar in Eagan and lo and behold, our server was a student at Hennepin Tech. And it was really interesting because she had completed a baccalaureate degree at St. Olaf. I still pronounce it St. Olaf. She got a master's degree. Was it University of Minnesota, maybe? She would, she had a master's degree. And now was it Hennepin Tech because her fondest desire is to be a game warden. So when I talk about. There's so many things we do that we do so well, but you hear me talk about that thing that we do. I mentioned this yesterday. That's uniquely ours. And you know, she and what she's pursuing is sort of uniquely ours. It's something Hennepin Tech could do and help prepare her for something she's dreamed about, despite the journey she's been on to date. And nobody does that like us. I mean, St. Olaf does a great job at what they do and the University of Minnesota does a great job at what they do. But folks, M S C F folks that are here, I F O folks, M A P folks that are here. And to our friends from A F S M E and our friends from um, A S F. Nobody does what you do as well as we do. We are phenomenal at this. And that's why folks who are trying to reinvent themselves at any point in their life are often attracted to come and spend time with us. And fulfill their hopes and dreams. So thanks for everything you do for us. With that, Mr. Chair, I conclude my remarks.
So I just have a few comments. Uh, one, thank you for your presentations to the board. There's a number of things that you said that we are not individual experts on. And I expect we'll attempt to learn more about those topics going forward. I do know two things. One is that we do resist. The actions that are coming at us from the federal government. We've not been put in a position yet where we've had to. Push back. But we have persisted with our equity efforts. We have persisted in enrolling. All the students in the state of Minnesota, regardless of race, religion, creed, ethnicity, et cetera. And we'll continue to do that job. And we'll go to the commencements and we will watch these students walk, these diverse students walk and propelled into careers. That you folks help uh, them to learn and launch their lives with. So. There's a lot of political capital around this table. And we will use it. If we need to use it to protect the students, the faculty and all the employees at Minnesota State. Secondly, you know, the numbers, Kevin, I I don't know the numbers that you. Talked to us and we'll look at the numbers. I do know one number. And that is system office administration, which has been frozen since the 2000 aughts. 2015. And with inflation, of course, the real dollars have declined over time. So I know that's one place that has not grown, uh, but we'll look at your other numbers too. A couple of other comments. Uh, thank you for the trustees' participation. At the Minnesota State Fair booth. Uh, it's always very educational to hear what people have to say at the state fair. Trustees Hipsh, Janet Johnson, Mo, Tully and I each took one or more shifts at the fair booth. It's it's a lot of fun. Thank you also for, to President Burnt and to D C T C. Uh, for hosting us this month. The 30 minute tour was great. Uh, we were practically running through the hallways. Uh, we got our steps in, so thank you very much. It was great to talk to the students also. And thank you to Peter and Anna and Todd and Matt for all your support for this meeting. Thank you all. As always to Carrie and Amanda. I know it's more work to go off site. Uh, for our board meetings. M S P was fantastic. It was a great experience. Uh, both to highlight the the partnerships between our colleges and universities and private industry. Uh, in the aviation field, which is just a tiny fraction of the partnerships that we have system wide. At Minnesota State. And one more thing, we had a, we started yesterday with a very data laden presentation. Awesome presentation, but lots of data. My goodness. We have the slides now. I expect we'll, we'll, there'll be a test next month, but there's a lot of data and the the two things that I deduced. Uh, the big picture themes were. That we have some population, some demographic challenges before us in the next 10, 20 years because. The traditional student age 15 to 24 over the next 20 years will be, will decline in Minnesota by 35,000. Which will mean that we'll need, as we've discussed before, to uh, market to. Students who need to return to school just for fun or because they want a new career. Or who want lifelong learning opportunities. And we need to focus on those students to remain vibrant all across the state. And the other thing I learned is that there's a higher job participation rate going forward among, I'll just call them seniors. Which means that half of our board will have to go back to work. So uh, thank you for everyone's participation in the meeting the last couple of days. And uh, oh, one more thing. We talked a lot, uh, we'll talk, we talked a lot at the retreat about what I'll call big questions. About going forward in the next five years. I was hoping we would start some of that discussion at this meeting, but it was. It was too soon. This meeting was too short. We had to do other things and the staff was busy doing other things. The system staff before this meeting, but uh, we will start those discussions at our November meeting. So thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's printed on your. Agenda list in the board book. Is there anyone who would like any matter to be removed from the consent agenda? All right. If not, then I'll call for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all those who approve the consent agenda vote I. I. All those who oppose it vote no. The motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. We'll move then to the board's standing committee reports, academic and student affairs. Chair Teffer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Committee for Academic and Student Affairs met on October 22nd. A quorum was present. The minutes of the June 18th meeting were approved. The committee heard a presentation from Winona State University regarding a proposed change to their vision statement. President Janz led his colleagues through the underlying assessment and process driving the change. The committee proceeded to approve the proposed change, adding the proposed amendment to the board's consent agenda for approval, which obviously has just happened. Finally, the committee heard a presentation from the Senior Vice Chancellor for Academic and Student Affairs, Satasha Green Steven. Title Strategy for the Future of Academic and Student Affairs for the Next Five Years. Committee discussion ensued regarding this draft document. Committee members and other trustees were encouraged to share their comments about the document directly to the Senior Vice Chancellor, her office. Or uh, through her email. And that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the board met as committee of the whole also to hear about next gen, including. Project Risk Review Number 16. And we'll look forward to Project Risk Review Number 17. We also heard a next gen, next gen update, both. Remitting some of the issues that are uh, happening now with respect to finance and H R. As that segment of next gen is in operation and also planning for student going forward. Uh, mixed reports, some challenges of hiring and and uh, personnel. Uh, but also optimism on the student front that we're on target, on schedule. So. Next, Finance and Facilities Committee had a robust meeting as usual.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Finance and Facilities met earlier today. We had two extension requests that came before us for contracts that were included in the consent agenda as well as four real estate transactions that are also in the consent agenda. Beyond that, we had a great conversation with regards to energy program as well as an update on the fiscal '26 budget update. That concludes our committee report.
Are there any trustee reports? Welcome again, Trustee Speck. We're happy to have you. The record also should reflect it. Trustee Mo is in attendance. He had stepped out during the roll. Okay. Any trustee reports? Maybe we'll get a report next month from ACCT in New Orleans. So, all right. Thank you very much to the trustees for your participation over the last two days. Next board and committee meetings are scheduled for November 18th and 19th, which will be the board's first meeting in our newly remodeled space in the system office. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.